I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of April 20th, 2017. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Here.
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Moats?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Here. First item on our agenda this evening is the public comment period, which is limited to comments on this agenda only. Speakers wishing to speak regarding the composition of district elections may also be heard during the public hearing portion of Item 2 of the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
There are a number, but they can be done during the ...
During the ... okay. Translators Carlos Escovedo and Jose Hernandez are here this evening to translate Spanish comments for the City Council. And the demographer, Carlos and Jose, would you please stand? Okay. So please see either one of them to assist with your translation during the public hearing. Los traductores Carlos Escovedo y Jose Hernandez están aquí esta noche para traducir comentarios para el Consilio Demográfico. Por favor, bien los señores para asistencia con sus traducciones. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title for the public hearing?
The City Council will receive a presentation from National Demographics Corporation on draft maps. City input from the public pursuant to California Elections Code, Section 10010 regarding the draft maps with proposed boundaries of the districts, discuss the potential sequence of elections, and then reduce the number of draft maps to a manageable number of alternatives.
Staff report is to be made by City Attorney Mr. Trujillo, along with our demographer, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening is the third public hearing concerning the city's transition to district-based elections, and the first meeting where maps are presented for the public and council's consideration and input. On February 21st, the council adopted a resolution of intention to transition to district elections. By adopting this resolution, any California Voting Rights Act litigation cannot be commenced for 90 days, and attorney's fees are capped at $30,000. To our knowledge, we are the first jurisdiction to proceed under the threat of litigation under AB 350. Public hearings were held on March 7th and March 30th in compliance with AB 350. The next public hearing will be held on May 16th. As of April 12th, the city has published 14 maps, and that is all maps that were received by the public, with two exceptions, which were virtually duplicates of each other, and the demographer will review that. Staff recommends this evening that the council receive a presentation from Doug Johnson of National Demographics Corporation, the city's demographics consultant. Open the public hearing, invite members of the public to speak about the draft maps and the potential sequence of elections. Close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the council for discussion. The council goals tonight are threefold. One, reducing the number of maps to a manageable number of alternatives and providing guidance on the sequencing of elections. To focus the council's deliberation tonight, staff recommends that the council take into consideration any maps that may not legally meet the requirements of the Federal Voting Rights Act. Mr. Johnson will walk the council through each statistical analysis of the presented Would ask that you provide direction to the demographer on what optional criteria the council would like to see, for example, communities of interest or incorporating the downtown specific plan. It should be noted that the city's planning commission has requested that the council consider the downtown specific plan when drawing district maps. Next, the council should determine if it desires four or five districts, and finally provide direction to staff on the sequence of elections. If there are no questions, I would turn it over to Mr. Johnson for his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, a pleasure to be with you. Real goal tonight is obviously for the hearing to hear from the public, so I'll go through this fairly quickly, but I do want to give some background and make sure everyone has the information about the different maps and what we're looking at tonight. The city attorney covered the schedule pretty well. We're looking at the dates that are up here. I should note that while we're, I think, fairly certain about May 2nd, that May 16th may get moved up because we're dealing with some legal deadlines in this process. The key dates, of course, remember are 2018 and 2020.
Excuse me one minute. Mr. Hayden, can we have someone move that flag just back a little bit, because we're not able to see it? Okay. Thank you.
No problem. So, obviously, the truly key dates are 2018, November 2018, and November 2020. First two council districts will hold election in 2018, the second two in 2020. In terms of how the different maps were drawn, there are two sets of rules we're following. The first is the federal requirements. I call these the must-dos. We must have essentially equal population in each proposed district. We must follow the Federal Voting Rights Act, and we must avoid racial gerrymandering, which the courts have defined as race can be a factor and a consideration, but it cannot be the predominant consideration. So, as the city attorney mentioned, he and I are looking at these maps, and I'll address the ones that raise concerns on those. Where the decisions really come down is on the traditional criteria on the right. So these are not requirements, these are goals. So we are trying to respect communities of interest, try to keep the districts compact and contiguous, and following major roads and other boundaries. Those are ... the compact contiguous and major boundaries are so that the districts are as easy as possible for the voters in them to understand. When Election Day comes, we want to be able to tell each other what doors to knock on and what doors are not in the district. And then the last two are respect for voters' wishes and continuity in office. This is the idea that the courts have endorsed, which is the voters have chosen the current council members. It really should be up to the voters to decide whether council member is reelected or not. To the extent possible, I, with my pen, should not try to tell the voters, "You elected these two before, you can only have one now." So again, it's on the balancing side, it's not a requirement, and you'll see in the maps, none of these maps keep everyone separate, but it is one of the criteria that can be balanced. And then the last one is planned future growth. This is not really a consideration this time around, because after every census, the lines have to be updated. So the 2020 census data will be released in 2021, and the lines will be redrawn then. So there's not going to be a lot of change between today and 2021. In 2021, we may look at that more, because those lines will be in place for 10 years. So each district's only going to hold one election before we come back and look at them again. So growth isn't a big factor here. And again, we're looking to choose which map is the best balance of these criteria. And with communities, then we had one additional twist, which is we want to respect communities of interest, and often that means keeping them united in a single district so they have the maximum voice in that one election. But many communities, or at least some, actually prefer to be divided. As the city attorney mentioned, the downtown area is one area that might make sense to be divided, so that while its voice is not concentrated in one seat, it has a say in multiple districts. We often get this in large, active senior communities like the Sun Cities. They say, "Our turnout is 95 percent. Don't pack us all in one seat. We want to dominate two seats." That kind of thing. So when people talk about neighborhoods, we're asking two questions. What is the neighborhood? And do you want to be concentrated in one seat? Or would you rather have multiple council members answer to the voters of your area? So those are the criteria that we're trying to balance, and as you'll see, there's lots of ways to do it. I believe my colleague, Dr. Levitt, went through this a little bit. There's a ton of data involved in this process. The key number is the total population. So if you're in a four district map, each district needs to have about 24,888. And if you're in a five district map, you need about 19,911. And then for those that are interested, on the web are all these demographics for every district in every map, broken down by language spoken at home, age, income, all those details. In terms of the Federal Voting Rights Act, in Santa Maria, we're really focusing on Latinos. We have looked at the Asian-Americans and African-Americans and Native American numbers, and none of those groups are concentrated enough in large enough numbers that they would impact the drawing of lines. So, and here, we're really looking at Latinos, and it's an interesting challenge. Traditionally, in districting and redistricting, we're looking at how can we get a seat, one or two seats that are majority Latino, in terms of your eligible voters? Well, your city is majority Latino. So now we're in this other category of how do we be careful not to pack too many Latinos who are wasting their votes in one seat? And that's a much grayer area in the law. So this map really shows the reds and yellows are the places where Latinos are 65 percent of the eligible voters or more. And given that Santa Maria matches the state demographics, they're an even higher percentage of the total population of those areas. So the question is, obviously, you have a large concentration in the north and in the central, and Latinos everywhere, but how do we best draw the lines so that we respect those neighborhoods without going so far that we pack Latinos? So that's a little bit of introduction. Let me get into the meat of tonight's presentation. And I should note that the, in order to kind of depersonalize the maps, we've labeled them with letters. They are in the agenda packet with the letters at the bottom of each map. And if people, during their comments, have questions, they wanted to speak about a certain map, I'm happy to tell them which map they saw online and what the letter is now. And at the end, you'll see a slide that shows it as well.
If it correlates to the attachment.
Right, right. So it's following the attachment listing. First, let me touch on the maps that were submitted that were not population balanced. We got five of these. Really, these were the first ones that came in when the newspaper printed the map that didn't have any population numbers, so it's no surprise people weren't able to balance them at that point. They are useful in terms of their ideas that people wanted to convey. They are not maps that the council can adopt, because they're not population balanced. If we had only a couple of maps in discussion, we would actually go back to the authors and say, "How can we adjust this and fix it and make it balanced?" But the nice thing, and kudos to the community here, we have so many maps before us tonight that adjusting any of these five, you'd end up with one of the other maps that's already in the discussion. So we do want to acknowledge them and thank them for taking the time to send in a map to kind of get this process going. But these are not maps that the council can adopt, because they're not balanced. So jumping into the maps as they were drawn, and I'll come just two by two, so I can go through them quickly and get them in reasonable detail. The first map, Map D, this was actually a request that came in. The person didn't draw it with these jagged lines like this. The person said, "Can you just draw a map that starts on the left side of the city and goes across until it gets perfect population, and then start the next one?" As often happens, equal population numbers don't correspond nicely to major roads and neighborhoods, but this is a map where all four districts go from the north end of the city to the south end of the city. And if you wanted to pursue this, we could work on cleaning it up. The other piece that that really highlights, it kind of takes every community in the city and gives it multiple council members by dividing them up. Map G is a more traditional map. You can see it's that four quadrants that was discussed a lot at the first hearing, and that most of those non-population balanced maps tried to address. If you're wondering where A, B, E, and F are, they were the non-population balanced maps. That's how we got to D and G. And you can see how this one balanced the population, because we have Map 2 comes across in the north, and District 4 comes across in the south. And that's how this one, six of the four quadrants idea, but gets population balance. H and I. H, you can see up in the north, it's very similar to the previous map. It comes across a little bit differently for District 2 to balance that in the north. Where it's very different is down south. Kind of get a central corridor, District 3, and District 4 is wrapping around it. So you can see the difference that this illustrates is mainly down south. Map I is very similar to the previous map. It does differ out in the east side, in that it comes up and picks up more of this area into District 4. But again, it's a four quadrants map that balances in the north and south. Map J, again, we're getting a quadrant map, but a little bit different. In this case, instead of District 1 losing that extra population up north, it's losing it down in the south. District 3 is coming north to pick up population and bring one down to balance. And then again, you have somewhat District 3 of a central corridor and 4 wrapping around Map L is something completely different. It's taking a different look, and that's one of the things we're trying to do in this discussion, is make sure that all the different options are out there and discussed. This is obviously a horizontal map, where you're getting a northern seat above Donovan, and then a central District 2, a lower central District 3, and then a southern District 4 that is below Stoll. So a very different approach in L, obviously. M is a mix of different elements, obviously. You get District 1 moving up north and not coming all the way down to the, I think it's Broadway and Main, is the intersection there. It's more of a northern seat. Then you get 2 coming across and getting that north-central part. 3 is now a completely western district, and 4 is a far south and a southeastern district. And then N is the last of the four district maps, and I realize I'm going through these quickly, so certainly for the public, I'm happy to come back, or for the council, if you want, we can go back and talk about any of these in more detail. But N is a little bit different in that 1 is more of a vertical district. See how it's coming farther south and not going as far east? I do want to note that District 4 in this map actually comes around and picks up kind of that eastern arm of the city that's off of these maps, and a little bit of the territory in the northeast. And then 3 and 4 are really a clean split right along the highway there, down south in Map N. So some of the maps you notice are very compact up north, and then a little bit less compact down south. N is definitely an example, the other way around, very compact in the south and less compact up north, all reflecting the different challenges made that we face trying to get equal populations and still follow neighborhoods and major roads. Briefly, we only have three maps that are made up of five districts, O, P, and Q. We did not have any five district maps submitted that were not population balanced. These are all three that have come in. Five districts run into some very, even more equal balance, or equal population challenges, as you can see from these maps. None of them are able to put four districts right at the main intersection, in part because District 1 up north, since it's smaller, can't get all the way down there. But you get a very different take. You get District 4 is completely in the west in Map O. You get more of a southern District 5, and then a eastern District 4. Oh, I can, okay, there you go. Thank you. Yeah, it works better than that point, than the mouse. Thank you. And you get 3 is kind of an odd step. Part of what's going on in 2 and 3 is when the districts get smaller, that concentrated area of really, really heavily Latino population really starts to look like packing, if you have truly compact districts, you're getting huge numbers. So in these maps, we're really trying to, these are all majority Latino districts, but we're trying to avoid getting too high of a Latino number where we're wasting, what the law uses, wasting their votes, where they could be influencing another election. And this is part of the challenge of districting, is race cannot be the predominant issue, but we also have to be careful that we don't violate the Voting Rights Act through the numbers. So we do want the decisions to be driven by neighborhood decisions and communities of interest and compactness, but numbers are something we have to look at. And speaking of numbers, here's our summary of maps. There's a lot here. Couple of key things this shows, this matches the names to the letters for those that are looking for how to make that connection. Shows how many districts are in each map, so the top ones all have 4, and then 5. At the bottom are not population balanced maps. Some key things, mention the downtown. The next column tells you how many districts touch the downtown specific plan area. The pairs is the number of districts that have council members together. I mentioned that criterion. And then we have the sequencing of elections. Ideally, if you end up in a map where every council member's in a separate seat, that seat's just assigned to the year that council member's up, and it's nice and easy. Here, every map has at least one pair, and so the sequencing and the assignment of elections can get very complicated. I won't walk through it all right now, because if you think you have a lot of maps, and that's making your head spin, wait until you start talking about this. But when we get the list and narrow it down, or if the council or the public have questions about it, I'm happy to go through it in as much detail as wanted. The other interesting difference among these maps is the number of Latino majority seats. So as I mentioned, the city is already right at 50 percent, a little over Latino among the eligible voters. And the different maps have different numbers. So some of them have, like, even when there's four seats, some have two majority Latino seats, and the most Latino is 65 or even 73 percent Latino. Others have three, and the most Latino is lower, 55 up to 70 in one case. And then in population deviation, this is the equal population number. That percentage has to be below 10, so all these maps are okay on that. If we're right after the census, the courts want to see that number really low, down around 2 or 3 or 4 percent at most. Because the numbers we're using are now seven years old, we have more flexibility, and we've had a new court case just about a year ago, so you had considerable flexibility as long as you're below that. So if you had two identical maps, and one of them was off by 2 percent, one was off by 8 percent, we'll go with the 2 percent one. Otherwise, you don't have to worry about this, all these maps are legal. And that's my brief presentation. As I mentioned, I'm happy to answer any questions or show any detail. I also have the mapping software, so if people want to know exactly where lines are, I can zoom in on that map and show in more detail than you can.
Any questions of Mr. Johnson? So, Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we received three communications. An email was received from the county elections office suggesting map selections that they believe will have the least impact on voters. In order of preference, they are the National Demographics Corporation, Map 4, Four Districts, Draft 2, which is Attachment M1 and M2. Second is National Demographics, Map Four Districts, Draft 3, which is Attachment N1 and N2. And then finally, the National Demographics, Map Five Districts, Draft 1, which is Attachment P1 and P2. Also, an email from the city manager, Mr. Hayden, indicating that Councilmember Moats requested that his map, Attachment K1 and K2, be removed from further consideration. And finally, an email from Kathy Sherum, expressing support for the cause District 4 map, citing its simplicity and effectiveness, fairness, and common sense.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to open up the public hearing, Madam Clerk. We have requests to speak, I know.
We have 24.
Okay, so what is the pleasure of the council? You want to do three minutes or two minutes on this?
You know, Madam Mayor, at the last meeting, I think we had 33 public speakers. We did allow the three minutes, asked them to keep them briefer if they possibly could. And I think we got through it in about an hour and 10 minutes.
Okay.
Hour and 15 minutes, so.
Okay. It's okay, the three's fine? Okay, good. So I would start with, I will call three names so that you're ready to come up and speak. Sarah Galindo, Abraham Melendez, and Glenn, oh, I'm sorry, let me, Mr. Morris needs to be at another engagement. So Mr. Morris, and then Sarah Galindo, and Abraham Melendez, and David Dennis.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to provide input this evening, and we'll try to start you off on a short timeframe. From the Chamber of Commerce perspective, I think there are two issues that we would like you to keep under consideration. One is making sure that, we'd like to see all four districts contain a significant portion of the central business district, the downtown plan. I think it's important that that economic driver of our community be important to every member of the council. And then secondarily, for the very same reasons, we would argue that we'd like all four districts to touch on Broadway, as it goes north and south away from the downtown, so that, again, that primary business corridor is under consideration, is always being considered by all members of the council. With those considerations in mind, the two maps that we saw that we think would be good starting points, again, knowing that there'll be some adjustments and fine-tuning the numbers, would be the maps presented this evening as labeled as Map M and Map G. We think both of those get at the two issues that we think are important and would be good starting points for narrowing it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Did you say M or G?
M.
M is in Mary.
M is in Mary.
Thank you.
Sarah Galindo, and Abraham Melendez, and David Dennis.
Hello, my name is Sarah Galindo.
Yeah.
I'd like you to trust the maps that your people have drawn and really consider the heart of our communities. The main and Broadway, the main and Broadway district lines make the most sense, because that's where our people see the most important divisions, the most important man-making divisions of the communities that keep other communities from interacting with each other. So I think the quadrant maps that we have are great ideas, but the one I think makes the most sense is CAUS based on its simplicity and how it tries to keep the communities together and really make the lines not divisions, but just lines that everyone knows are already there. And I think that is the best option for the council to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Abraham Melendez, followed by David Dennis, followed by Eva Didion.
Hello, councilmembers, Madam Mayor. My name's Abraham Melendez, and myself and my fiance, Sarah Galindo, are very much a product of Santa Maria. We were both born here, we both went to school here, so we're both young professionals working here. I think that in the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion whether where are the young people, and I think today you will see a lot of the young people, a lot of high school students, a lot of college students here from Hancock. And I would like to say that we have discussed some of the maps, we looked at some of the maps, and we feel very, very much saddened by the fact that the demographers did not take into consideration what was the majority of the discussion from the community regarding splitting the maps between Main and Broadway. I feel that you should definitely take into consideration some of the community submitted maps. I actually really liked your map, Councilmember Moats. I am, it's too bad that you decided to withdraw it, but we feel that even that map really took into consideration the input from the community, so I commend you for that. But I am disappointed that you decided to withdraw the map. And therefore, you know, not having Moats' map, we feel, a lot of us, young people here, that CAUS' map is definitely the map that we should go for. I think it's important that you listen to the community and not for an outside agency that clearly doesn't understand how the communities are here. I think a lot of people, when they think of Santa Maria, they think of the north, the northwest, the northeast, and southwest, and the southeast. And I would just like to say thank you, and I hope that, you know, you choose right, because, you know, personally, I don't want the city to have to go through another lawsuit or any kind of difficulty, so I feel like we need to get it right the first time. Thank you so much.
Yes.
We need to have specified CAUS map, Four Districts, to CAUS map, Five Districts.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Dennis.
Council, my name's David Dennis. I live on Hermosa Street, just east of Miller. It's a very diverse neighborhood with a mix of ages, ethnicities, including homeowners and an awful lot of renters. Our neighborhood is just like most others here in Santa Maria, and that's that it's defined by the commercial districts along the major transportation routes that intersect our city. The most prominent of those arteries is Broadway and Main. The most prominent of those arteries is Broadway and Main. For over 100 years, the intersection of Broadway and Main has been the heart of our city. The proximity to that intersection is how we most commonly describe the locations within our community to others. Additionally, the character of the downtown city center is a vital interest that should be shared by all of us. The division of Santa Maria into four districts at the city center of Broadway and Main will be easy to understand and to describe. Having drawn and submitted a map myself, letter I, I understand that the simple division of town at this center does not avoid the legal and demographic issues that must be addressed by the council. And having an opportunity to draw a map with just the population data, and then later seeing the results of that, I realize how complicated it is to make sure that everything is dealt with appropriately. But I do believe that people acting in good faith can make the proper adjustments now and again after the next census in the future by making those adjustments on the outer portions of our city as it continues to grow. I encourage the council to accept one of the maps, I have a favorite, but certainly one of the maps that provides for an at-large mayor and four council districts divided at Broadway and Main. Thank you.
Thank you. Eva Didion, followed by Laura Henderson, followed by Hazel Davalos.
My name is Eva Didion, and I'm here this evening because the way Santa Maria will be divided into districts is a very important issue to me. Like most people who live in Santa Maria, when I came here 40 years ago, I quickly learned that Santa Maria is basically divided into four quadrants. When I first moved here, I lived in the northwest side of town, and for more than 30 years now, I've lived at the same address in the northeast side of town. That's just the way Santa Maria is divided. It came to me really quick. When I tell someone where I live, I tell them I live in the northwest side of town, and they know that the area where I live is north of Main Street, east of Broadway. At the north end is the riverbed, and on the east side is where the three freeway exits, Main, Donovan, and Broadway run through. I've been a social worker with Santa Barbara County for over 30 years and served the whole community. My clients come from every corner of the city. When I meet somebody new and they find out that we both live on the northeast side of town, we're neighbors. That's our neighborhood. We all have the same concerns. Our children go to the same elementary schools at Vessler, I mean, junior high at Vessler Elementary at Alvin, and at Rice School. We shop at the same supermarkets, Mon's on Main Street or the New Market at the north end of town. We go to the same gas stations, and we access the same freeway ramps, the last three or the first three, depending on how you look at it. So we have the same concerns. We would like to be represented by somebody that comes from our quadrant of town, our neighborhood. For the folks that live on the northwest side of town, it's a little bit different. They don't have freeway exits or ramps in their neighborhood, but they do border a long stretch on the west side to the fields that are between Santa Maria and Guadalupe. That brings a whole new set of concerns, and I'm sure they want somebody to represent them that takes that into consideration. So we want representatives that speak for us and that know what our neighborhoods are like. It makes a lot more sense to have our city divided. The plans I have seen so far don't seem, I don't want to say, I don't want to be rude, but they just don't seem logical. For us that live here in Santa Maria, and I think probably pretty much everybody here does, except maybe the folks that wrote the maps or made the maps, we all know Main and Broadway is where the town is divided, and I think it would be great if we could have our districts divided the same way. It'll make it easier for us to move around the neighborhoods, too, when we try to knock on doors to get people to vote for us. We'll know where to go. I thank you so much, and I hope you didn't only let us speak, I hope you all listened. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Laura Henderson, followed by Hazel Davalos, followed by Elizabeth Schneider, followed by Jen Zornow.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Patino. I'm here this evening to express my support for using maps like G or I that use the logical boundaries of Broadway and Main as the primary divider. Like the last speaker so eloquently said, this is how we see our city. This is how we describe locations. These quadrants make sense. The majority of the maps that were submitted, as well as the majority of those who have spoken, favor these quadrants. As a resident of the Carriage District, my neighbors and I share an interest in things like downtown development and Allen Hancock College. District Four draft one map from the demographer inexplicably divided the college, and five district draft two put neighbors of this community center with folks who reside near Gloucester. It just doesn't make any sense. I respectfully request that council considers the community input, the overwhelming support for the four quadrants, and directs the demographer to either resubmit maps that reflect the overwhelming majority of the community input and uses Broadway and Main as the boundaries, or uses one of the maps that have been submitted by the community. I realize that this is not an easy task, and thank you for your careful consideration so that Santa Maria can truly be an all-America city. Thank you.
Thank you. Hazel Davalos, followed by Elizabeth Schneider, followed by Jen Zornow, followed by Robert Dickerson.
Good evening, council, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
My name is Hazel Davalos. Hello, good evening. I work with CAUZ, and I'd like to voice support for map G, a four district map divided at Broadway and Main. I also have some concerns about several of the demographer-submitted maps. As stated by a couple of the previous speakers, we have a real concern about these maps diluting Latino voters. Maps that combine low-income immigrant neighborhoods with affluent neighborhoods in the same district hurt the voting rights of underrepresented communities. In a real election, the wealthier neighborhood will almost always drown out the voice of the poorer neighborhood. The candidates will most likely come from that side of the district, spend their time knocking doors on that side, raise their money from that side, and listen to the constituents on that side. I think it's common knowledge that the lower-income and more Latino side of the city is west of Broadway, with the exception of areas below Bedaravia and near Orchid. These neighborhoods deserve their own representation and not to be cut into districts on the other side of town. And I'd also add that although the demographer maps contain, the majority of those maps contain two-majority Latino citizen voting age population districts, the demographers on statistics show that when you look at the voters who actually turned out in the previous two elections, and as far as who actually votes in those districts, they're not a genuine Latino majority. The only maps that numerically have this, this majority, are maps G, J, I, and K prior to removal. And again, I'd like to voice support for map G. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Schneider, followed by Jen Zornow, followed by Robert Dickerson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Elizabeth Schneider, and I live in the northeast district on every map that's been drawn. I live in the Casa del Rio Mobile Home Park. I must say I am disappointed in all the maps proposed by the demographer. In the previous public hearings, the council repeatedly heard comments from the public that Main and Broadway should be the starting lines to form the new districts. There is precedent in the city. The police department used Main and Broadway to create four quadrants when the department undertook their survey at the council's request. In addition, the planning commission and business people in the community have expressed that they want downtown represented in all the districts. I don't agree with the demographer's apparent conclusion that equal districts cannot be created using Main and Broadway as broad boundaries for the new districts. I would urge the council to strongly consider the CAUZ map as one of the maps selected for final consideration. The map is logical, based on common sense, simple to understand, and the map that best represents the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen Zornow, followed by Robert Dickerson, followed by Jessie McDonald.
Good evening. Thank you to the mayor and the council for allowing us to speak this evening. I also am in favor of a Main and Broadway split, and I think that maps G and I really represent our community. I live in the northwest community, and the ideas that float around there are different than in the southwest or the southeast or the northeast. I've actually lived in all four of these quadrants of the city, and they just have different needs and need different representation. So I hope you will take that into mind when you're looking at maps, and I really hope that either G or I will be one of the maps that we see in the final version that we're choosing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Dickerson, followed by Jessie McDonald, followed by Hector Sanchez.
Mayor Patino, state council members, I'm addressing you this evening to discuss my version of the district map D1, attachment D1 and D2. I want to give you the thoughts that went behind the particular configuration why I believe it was some version of it would be beneficial to the city. Although simplistic-looking, the north-south set of district strips was not done arbitrarily. My primary concern in shifting to district elections, my primary concern of shifting to district elections has been that as council members are elected, their focus might be district-centric. I believe that governance of the city, any city, not just Santa Maria, should be with the benefit of the city as a whole in mind. I believe that representing the broadest cross-section of Santa Maria will guide future council members to consider the greatest elements of Santa Maria as a whole. With each council seat having constituents from the far north to the far south, this can be accomplished. This sort of districting also produces the smallest deviation from the ideal at only 2.16 percent. All residents are represented equally as it should be. As to why I did not submit a west-to-east districting map, I did think about it. However, I determined commerce might suffer under this model. Assorted industries, ag and light industry, industrial in particular, utilize the arterial paths via 166 Bedaravia and other surface roads to move product. The dynamics of that movement and any problems or improvements that might be needed would tend to fall on individual council members depending on the road being discussed. Solutions or changes would become more difficult to implement and agree upon. If, however, the districts were broken into north-south strips, then all of the council's seats would have reasons for dealing with issues such as this jointly. I want to briefly touch on the planning commission letter requesting the council consider constructing each district so it has a toehold in the downtown-specific area. You'll note that my map does not contain this element. When I first submitted the map concept, I had not brought the matter of the downtown-specific area before the planning commission yet, so I left the element out of my map. At the April 5th planning commission session, I am pleased to say that they unanimously agreed with this position. With this in mind, I can tell you that I have already considered modifications to my map might be needed. Two very simple fixes will bring the number of districts into the downtown-specific area to three, and I believe the fourth district, District One, can be brought in as well with a bit of work. I would be happy to meet with the council and the demographers to go over any ideas for modifications, which can be done before the April 24th deadline. Finally, the city council has a very difficult, important set of decisions that it must make. Numerous interests have reasons for tugging you in one direction or another. To that, I want to say this: Hold fast and be strong. Make your districting decisions as best as possible for all communities within the city of Santa Maria. Make those decisions with a mind as to what will be the best way to ensure future councils come together and govern the city as a whole. Your decisions over the next few weeks will set the path for the ability of our elected officials to govern for decades to come.
Thank you, Mr. Dickerson. Jessie McDonald, followed by Hector Sanchez, followed by Janet Cruz.
Good evening, city council, Madam Mayor. My name is Jessie Flunes. This is the third time that I've actually spoken to the city council. And one of the main concerns that I feel that's not being addressed is listening to your constituents. And so a lot of folks that have shown up have said Main and Broadway, and have said four districts, and have pleaded and advocated really to say that if we don't have representation on the city council, you do not represent the community. So we need people that are on the city council that are not only listening to the decisions and things that are needed. For example, where I live in the northwest quadrant, basically, which is the northwest side, and in that quadrant, we really need somebody that is going to not only represent and adequately distribute what needs to be done in our community for the renters, in terms of having renters' rights and having somebody that's going to be advocating for that. We also talked about having environmental issues addressed, because there's a big population with trucks and cars and so forth. And my concern is that if us folks that are more low-income do not have representation and have a common goal with somebody that is representing at the city level, it's going to be very difficult to communicate and have more adequate decisions made in the future for the city of Santa Maria. The city of Santa Maria is predominantly more Latino, and not only having more Latino representation, it's going to be difficult to work together. And my main concern is that I don't want it to become a low-income and high-income situation. Like if we work together from the get-go, from the beginning, it's going to be easier to attack the variety of issues occurring. There's quite a bit occurring on my block alone, and I think the people that are able to vote, even though they may be or we are Latino, we are only going to be able to move forward with those that are knocking on our doors and really listening to our stories. So I would advocate that if you could please remind yourself, and I know that some of you were not here at the last meeting, at the last city council that we had, there was only three of you here, but everyone advocated for Main and Broadway, everyone advocated for four districts, and for them to be equally populated, and also for them to have representation that addresses the needs of this city. I've only been here a year, and I'm quite shocked in the sense that a lot of things haven't been done in the city, and they need to get done faster rather than later. So with that being said, I hope that you really listen to your constituents, and listen to the young people, and think about the future of what you want the city to look like and be. It's very difficult to hear that the majority of maps that were turned in could possibly not be representing who we are, and it's saddening, because it feels like we come up here and we say what we need to say, and no one's listening. So I'm knocking on your door today to remind you, you are in the position to represent us. You work for the community. And so I hope that you can do that for whatever time you have left on your council.
Thank you very much.
Please follow the CAUZ's map. Thanks.
Thank you. And Hector Sanchez, followed by Janet Cruz, followed by Kate Adams.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm going to be brief. I want to get back to the obvious conversation we're continuing to hit on, which is the four quadrant district, and I really want the council really look from the business perspective. Because if you look at the north side, for example, or even the south side for the Main and Broadway, I mean, you can have collaboration, your team, two council members, and conversely, if you have on the east side of Main, on the west side of Main, you have councilmen, councilpersons working together on those district corridors. And if you look, for example, on the east side of Main, those businesses are different than the west side of Main. So, you know, a different focus, a different orientation, and really some strategy to bring in different types of businesses would be, it's part of a success, it would make that much more successful to have councilmen, councilpersons collaborating based on a four district element. And the other aspect I really want to address is really, the Main-Broadway is not something arbitrary, it's a historical precedent, right? And the city was formed around those corners. And if we look, you know, let's go forward in time, now the year is 2022 or 2020, and you know, people are going to be looking back and saying, well, how did you form the districts? Well, we did it on the obvious. We started with the Main-Broadway. You know, that's the conversation we want to have and be proud of as councilmen when we look forward, when we look backward on this decision. So I really want you to look at that as well, because, you know, we need to stand tall in our decision, and I know you're going to do the right thing, because, you know, it's set in front of you. So let's have, you know, looking at the future, but looking backwards as, because your constituents are going to ask you, why did you take that position, you know, particularly if it looks like a gerrymandered position? So I really want you to do the right thing, and I know you will. And I look forward to the four districts. I'm supporting two of those, which would be David Dennis', which is the I, and CAUZ, which is G. I think in the end, we are going to see, you know, conflicts with some of the councilmen here today, and they're just going to be voted out. That's really, by district, it's just going to happen. And I thank you for your time, and I look forward to, you know, a good decision here. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Cruz, followed by Kate Adams, followed by Mary Jacca.
Good afternoon, council members and Madam Mayor. I'd like to say hi to Madam Mayor. I know she was out for a DC trip, I believe, and thank you for being here. I am here representing not just myself, but also my parents, who are not able to be here because of work. My parents have been living here for over 30 years, and I was telling them about the situation, and, you know, they gave me the feedback that, you know, the most common sense is to, you know, not necessarily divide us, but like do the district lines starting on Main and Broadway. And they said that because, I mean, it was just common sense, and they didn't even go to high school, you know, and they get that. So I was, you know, proud to hear that from them, because I agree. So, I was, you know, proud to hear that from them, because I agree. I'd also like to say how like the drafts, they don't represent the communities in Santa Maria. We all know that the lower-income and Latino side of the city is on the west side of Broadway, with the exception of the areas below Beteravia. And I believe these neighborhoods, they deserve to have their representations as they also cooperate with the city. I'd like to also mention that the Planning Commission also wants every district to have, you know, a part of the downtown, which is Maine and Broadway, and I think it's really And with all due respect, you know, I feel that you all represent us, like I have said before, and, you know, we all voted for you, and, you know, we voted because we believe that you will represent us, and we trusted you to take those seats, and we, I think that it'd be best for you to trust us as the community members to, you know, vote or, you know, consider a map or draft G and I, and that would be all, thank you.
Thank you. Kate Adams, followed by Mary Jacca, followed by Joanne Barrero. Good evening.
My name is Kate Adams, I live north of Maine and west of Broadway, and I teach at Allen Hancock College, which is south of Maine and west of Broadway. And I'm a fan of the G map, the CAUS map, because of what people have been saying, and I concur, that the Broadway and Maine cross makes historical, economical, demographic, cultural sense. But rather than speak to maps, I think after listening to my fellow citizens for the last 20, 30, 40 minutes, I just want to give you a heads-up, a high-five. You have been eloquent in your participatory democracy, in your taking yourselves seriously as citizens, residents, and voters in Santa Maria. And of course, district elections, which is a thing that's been coming for some time for Santa Maria, like 20 years, and is a thing that communities surrounding us have already come to, is an opportunity, an engagement, a wish to make more participatory our democracy, to expand the number of voters who feel connected to their local government. And so, just keep on keeping on, is what I have to say to citizens of Santa Maria. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Jacca, followed by Joanna Barrera, followed by Judy Birch.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and council members. Before I begin to read what I have previously prepared, I just want to make a statement and clarify that, you know, district elections doesn't mean that the representative can only vote on issues in their district. They're still going to be representing the city as a whole. It's just that we're going to be able to elect someone that understands each neighborhood. And I don't want that to be lost, you know, in that we're thinking that, well, only one council member will be able to represent District 1 and then, you know, so on. But I'm here this evening to comment on the maps being presented for public comment. I want to repeat that in the history of Santa Maria, Maine and Broadway have always been the dividing section of what most people view the center of town. Even the downtown has the Town Center West, across Broadway, we have the Town Center East. The city was created by four landowners donating land to form the four corners, which is now Santa Maria, Maine and Broadway. North and South Broadway is a federal highway, it's the Business 101 and State Highway 135. West and East Main Street is a state highway, the 166, that is a natural divide. The addresses all start at zero from Maine and Broadway, another natural division. The train tracks came into town on Main Street, some of you will remember that, another natural historical fact and division. The city leaders have naturally used these divisions when expansion is needed, where the low-income or affordable homes and apartments are built, mostly the northwest and southwest. I'm supporting the map with four districts that will use Maine and Broadway as a starting point. I believe that the map submitted by CAUS with the help of community stakeholders is most acceptable to be in line with the California Voting Rights Act. I believe it also meets the Federal Voting Rights Act. Some being presented by the demographer look suspicious. You must be careful not to use gerrymandering in order to reserve the present council seats and not diminish the Latino votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne Barrero, followed by Judy Birch, followed by, I can't read this, last name is Baxter.
Good afternoon, council members and public, and so, yeah, I totally agree with what everyone else has been saying about, you know, having the natural division lines, Broadway and Maine. It's just, it just makes sense. I also asked my parents, like Janet did, you know, they lived here like about 20 years about, and, you know, they feel like they don't have someone that, you know, represents them in their community. I live in the northwest area, and like, they've never seen someone knocking on their doors to ask them about what's going on in their community, or how they can be best represented by a council member. So, I think that's problematic and very worrisome, and also, I think some of the maps that were put out by the demographer are worrisome as well. We don't want to dilute Latino voters. We don't want to, you know, just put them with upper-class affluent neighborhoods where, you know, I'm pretty sure a lot of people that would run for candidacy would go knock on their doors, but not go knock on doors of other individuals, Latino voters. A lot of them, you know, maybe not be as educated as other individuals, but it's important to reach out to the corners of Santa Maria. And I definitely support Map G, CAUS's map. You know, it's the way the community is reaching to you all, and, you know, you see the public here, and I'm really happy to see, you know, youth and young adults and people from the community, you know, professionals, and just as many, you know, diversity of people from our city, right, and coming and reaching to you and telling you all how to vote on these maps. So, I support Map G, and I hope you all vote and support the maps similar to that along those lines, so, thank you, council members.
Thank you. Jay Baxter, followed by Inez Ruiz, followed by Jennifer Lopez.
Jennifer Lopez?
Yep, she's here.
Celebrity. I am not Muslim, I wore my hoodie like this to represent the people that aren't here to speak for themselves, and I wanted to say that I was incensed by the praying and the using the name Jesus, even though I like Jesus and I'm a Christian. That said, getting on to the thing that we're talking about tonight, I did not do my homework this time, and I had to quickly look at the maps to decide which ones I liked, and it appeared G to me was the good one, and it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, that's probably the one that I like. I would suggest, if we're going to ever do this in the future, if we could maybe put a dark line on Broadway and on Maine, for those that didn't do their homework like me, so they can see how the maps relate to that. Also, I was looking at H, and it looked to me like it didn't look very compact or contiguous. I was wondering how that could possibly have ever happened. And also, I was unable to tell by some of the maps if, and I saw that some were very Latino, but were there two districts that were very Latino? If you put all the Latinos in one district, that kind of dilutes. Also, from what everybody else was saying at this hearing, the last one, the Maine and Broadway corridor, that, I think if you start there and go out, and where you have to adjust to population, you do it at the edges of the city, the east and west, and the north and south edges, that's where you adjust for the population. Because the demographer said that our maps were not submitted with balance on the population, that's because we didn't have population figures. So, that would be one way for you, the demographer, Douglas Johnson, to do that. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Inez Ruiz, followed by Jennifer Lopez, followed by Yolanda.
Thank you for holding this hearing, and this next step is kind of interesting, and that it's not often that I have attended City Council meetings where the social change organizations and the Chamber of Commerce are touting concepts that are so overlapping and similar, and I think it's valuable for the council and the mayor to pay attention to this unique circumstance. I'm not going to repeat all of the unique things that have been brought up about the Broadway and Maine corridor, other than it seems like the maps were not population-balanced, and that's something we understand now, because we didn't have those figures to work with. But I don't get the sense of the demographers working hard to keep the benefits of the Maine and Broadway corridor and create a really solid map, and I concur that I'd like to see what could be done with the map submitted by CAUS, so that it meets all of the criteria. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Lopez, followed by Yolanda, followed by Helen Galvain.
Hello, good evening, my name is Jennifer Lopez, and I am a high school student. The maps that were shown earlier do not make sense to me, because they seem like random lines on a map of our city. I strongly support the four-district map, because the Latino community should receive a fair representation. We cannot just pretend our neighbors do not matter. As a high school student, this division is very important for me, as it is for my community. For this reason, I strongly support the division of Broadway and Maine. Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda, followed by Helen Galvain, followed by Hector Ramirez.
Hello, good evening, my name is Inez, and I just wanted to say that I support the four-division thing from Maine and Broadway, because it just seems logical, I mean, my parents know it, everybody knows it, everybody that I know knows it. So, I don't understand why split the city, you know, in different weird forms, I don't know. Anyways, I really do support the Maine and Broadway one, because it's just logical, everybody knows it. You know, like, people that come in town to visit, like my family members, they just like tell me, "Maine and Broadway, and it's just a big street, like, you see this and that, and it's just, it's so obvious." So, yeah, I support that one, thank you.
Thank you. Helen Galvain, followed by Hector Ramirez, followed by Minga Seja.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ellen.
I wasn't really prepared to talk tonight, but I just want to say that I support Map G. It makes a lot of sense to me. I haven't really had time to look at the maps online, and so, I think what somebody suggested about making Maine and Broadway a little bit darker would make it easier to read. But one of the things I want to say, and I hate to say this, but I'm going to say it, you know, I'm sure that you're all writing down what people are saying, and Map G is coming up quite a bit, so I hope that you will listen to the community. You know, there have been instances in the past where people have come and given their opinions, and I think a lot of the community has felt that we're not really being listened to. So, I do hope you keep that in mind and really listen to, you know, what the community really feels makes sense. Thank you, Yolanda, for saying that everybody knows Maine and Broadway is a division of the city. You know, I was born here, I lived in Guadalupe, and we came to town every weekend growing up, and so, I've known the community for many, many years, and it definitely is the dividing sector of the city. So, thank you, and please listen.
Hector Ramirez, followed by Minga Seja, followed by Lawanda Pruitt.
My name's Hector Ramirez, and I'm a student at Allen Hancock College, also work at the Radisson, and like, the majority of the community here, I agree that we should vote on a map that divides Santa Maria from Broadway and Maine, since it's really, pretty much, well, the center of Santa Maria. And, I mean, it's been like that ever since I moved here, and I don't know since who, how long it's been like that, but, yeah, I strongly agree that we should vote for one that divides Santa Maria from Maine and Broadway. Also, who knows more about the community than the community itself, right? So, that's one of the things I strongly agree on.
Thank you. Minga Seja, followed by Lawanda Lyons Pruitt.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and members of the council. I'm actually speaking today because my husband used to do this all the time, but I have to do it today. I want to say that we tried to get district councils many years ago, and I think the voices that you have heard today from the youth and some of the people that want to work together, and really, we are working together, not only in the districts, but in other community issues, where we want people to feel like they want to participate in governance, and want to be representative of what they are concerned with, and many of them haven't had a chance, many don't vote, because they've had bad experiences with governments in their own countries, and they feel that it is not used to do that. But I think that I have seen more and more that we are doing more, where we are trying to collaborate, we are trying to make Santa Maria all-American city, and we're trying to make people work together, and we could, probably, we're not all in the same boat at this point, but I think, as you can well see, professionals, youth, and other people that we could work together and work, and make this community a lovely, a community of hope, although there's a lot of people that have a lot of problems, and you all know that, I know that, because for 50 years, I've been working with problem youth and schools and making efforts to change things, and I think that you can help us change this for the best, so I support CAUS and the Broadway and Maine. Thank you.
Thank you. Lawanda Lyons Pruitt.
Good evening, Mayor Patino, council members. My name is Lawanda Lyons Pruitt, I'm president of the Santa Maria Lompoc National Advancement for the Association of Colored People, also known as NAACP. I will be rather brief tonight, and not take a lot of your time. I am surprised, Mr. Demographer, that we came to the last meeting, we gave our input and our suggestion, our opinion, yet none of those opinions are reflected in the five draft maps submitted. We do not want to be appeased, we do not want to be patronized. I know that you showed it on the board, and it would have been nice if you had at least included that, so that you, so that we could know that our input did matter. Now, getting past that, I agree with Mr. Morris, I agree with the other people that have spoken, I think that the dividing point should be Maine and Broadway, as has historically been the way that the city has been divided, and it would also allow all council members to have a stake in the downtown plan. Thank you for... Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pruitt. The, the, the one message I keep hearing is Main and Broadway. You don't know how hard, like Mr. O'Rourke knows, or myself, or, or my predecessor Larry Lavinino, fought for that because so many people wanted to change the downtown further south than Main and Broadway. And we kept saying, no, that is the downtown. So thank you very much for affirming that. I appreciate that. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight, and you did go through it really, really quick. I'd like to close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion in order to give direction to the demographer and staff.
Mayor Patino, could I ask a question of the demographer?
Sure, Mr. Waterfield.
Mr. Johnson, could you give us the absolute, if we did just a four quadrant view of Santa Maria at Broadway and Main, what are the four total populations for those four quadrants?
I mean, that, I did want to know, since that did get mentioned a lot. Let me go back to this. These maps come close, particularly the Enriquez map is probably the closest, and they all highlight that you can't do just pure four quadrants. And it's not that I or the council--
No, I'm, I'm just asking you for the absolute numbers. What, what would be those numbers?
Let me pull it up.
I mean, because one of the speakers brought up a very good point. If we did start at Broadway and Main and just expand it out and then made any of the adjustments based on the perimeter areas, that, that may be more compatible to the wishes of, of what we're hearing today?
Sure. Let me bring that up. And let me highlight too, all this is coming up, maybe too small, we have there, but. So, the northwest is, what's generally District One is 34,229 people. The, I'm pulling up the Enriquez map numbers because it's quick, but the northeast in that map is 25,274, but it has a little, it comes across a little bit. And then down south, I'd have to do the math separately. But I, I do want to highlight, which may be more directly answering the question, that most of the maps we're looking at tonight were drawn exactly the way you're talking about it. We're started, including the, the NDC maps, except for L, which was trying to include another mix in the, in the discussion. You actually have four maps, G, I, J, and N, all of which have all four districts right there at Broadway and Main coming together, and then balancing the rest of the seats in four different ways. So I do want to highlight that. You do have four, that bring all four together, again, G, I, J, and N, and then they mix it in different ways. Certainly, the, the cause map is one of those, and there's G. Let me show that up. And then decisions have to be made. So you're getting, you know, thousands of people from the north out of District One because thousands of people have to come out of that northwest quadrant. And again, it's not that we're not listening to the public, it's that the U.S. Supreme Court told us we have to have equal populations. And then, in, you know, District Four in this map crosses both Main and Broadway. And as you may have noticed in the plan summary, it actually does that. It's putting the entire council in one seat. So it's getting the two council members that live in the northeast and putting them with the two council members that live in the southwest. So even though it, it's very nice and square right around Main and Broadway, we have to look at the whole city. Every, every map makes choices, so. The other thing, if I may, I wanted to be sure to mention, there were a couple of comments from the public about the NDC maps diluting Latinos. And I want to assure you that, as you can see in the plan summary chart, certainly not the truth. We don't delete Latinos in any of these maps, and none of the maps would be, that we showed you, we feel would be legally liable because of dilution. The actual concern is on the other side, that some of the maps only have, may pack Latinos too much. So you could very well end up in a city where Latinos are majority eligible voters with half of the districts not having Latino majorities. So there is concern on that side. Yeah. And that's, that's what you can notice on the slides, that when you bring together that northwest community, as we talked about in Map G, and there, there's no numbers here, there, there's a clear number on the dilution side of the Voting Rights Act of, if you can get a majority Latino seat, you need to shoot for that. There's no clear line on the what's packing side. So for example, the cause map, District One is 73% Latino. It's the highest Latino percentage, and, and the worry is, while we had an impressive turnout tonight, all it takes is one point to challenge that is packing. In contrast with, for example, N, which it may be hard to see on here, but all four seats are right at the intersection there. In this map, there are three Latino majority seats, two of which are 60%, the third is majority. So these are the tough choices, and the tough balancing act that you face is you try to go through these criteria and look at it. And I will say, one of the things we do just so the public knows, one of our jobs is to make sure that all the different options are on the table. So for example, Map L, we were fully aware it did not have four at the, at the intersection, but we wanted to be sure this was on the table, and it was good to see unanimous public opposition to it. But it's a clear message to the council.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I think that we as a council probably should set the criteria, after listening to the demographer and what he had to work with and with, with the audience, but set the criteria of what we want as a city council. That way, we can start accepting maps or eliminating the maps. And I know that in the staff report, we looked at optional criterias that we would like to see in the ma, in our decision. So I know one of them is the population, and we want to make sure that we have an equal population of everything. And we're also looking at trying to keep the continuity of the government so that we don't have no head-to-head competition. And some of the maps, as the demographer says, that it, it just would eliminate two right off the bat. So we need to look at that as well.
Let me, let me ask a question. When it, on the federal laws, equal population, and, and you're the one that can do that because you can move the, the lines around for us. When it says no racial gerrymandering, and I'm, I'm seeing some of these maps have three, three of them have over 50% Latino population, at like 70%, 63%, 62%. And then half of them have, two, two of the maps with two districts. So you're talking 73%, 68%.
And that's why we need to set the criteria first, so we can start either eliminating the maps and then accepting the ones that do fit.
Okay, so we have equal population. We know we have to have that.
And then the continuity of government with the no head-to-head competition.
Okay.
Because that's very important on there. And the common interest.
Okay.
Well, first of all, I, I, I did not hear one person speak up for the five district maps. I mean, perhaps we could eliminate those to begin with.
Okay.
Yeah, eliminate the five district--
Four district maps, okay.
That makes, that takes three out.
And then I think the, the next thing, obviously, that we need to look at is, is based, you know, the primary criteria is equal population. So that obviously eliminates the few that were mentioned at the beginning. And I think that that would then bring us down to, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That would bring us down to nine maps out of the 16.
Okay.
Because as I understand it, the equal population is, is a finite, I mean, that, that cannot be--
We can't, we can't do anything about that.
Yeah. And then, as Councilman Waterfield is saying, then I think we need to decide on which of those other factors are, the suggested factors are, are most important to us. Obvious, the community of interest, the compactness, can, obviously, can, they all have to be contiguous. But as Ms. Waterfield said, continuity in office. Now, there are going to be some head-to-head matchups that we're not going to be able to avoid. I mean, Dr. Moats and I live up nine iron away from each other. And so, I, you know, I, I, I don't think we're going to avoid that one. But obviously, I think that we need to, we need to try and avoid some of the other matchups, if it is at all possible, and if it is, if it doesn't have the appearance or in fact represent gerrymandering.
So then, with, with that, we eliminated maps O, P, and Q, which are the five district maps, if I understand that right. O, P, Q, okay. And then the ones that we stated in the beginning of the meeting. We were talking about maps A, B, C, D, E, F?
Not D, but A, B, C, D, and F.
A, B, C, D, A, B, C--
E.
Oh, not D.
And F.
Okay. Well, D doesn't have the, the downtown, if we want to keep the, making the downtown part of our criteria, it doesn't have that in there.
So I, I think that's something that we have to decide to--
Absolutely.
Do, is that downtown, the inclusion of the downtown area specific to the wishes?
Oh, Dr. Moats thinks I'm forgetting him over here, so, okay, Dr. Moats.
And Mr. Hayden has a question, or, as coming.
I heard a lot of support for the cause map G. But it's hard to take that seriously if four councilpersons are all in the fourth district. That would mean by the year 2020, only one of us would remain standing. And I think there's a certain amount of self-preservation we have here.
And that's where the continuity of government is so very important.
So, and there's another map that also does the same thing. Map--
The D, I?
I.
Map I. Yeah, Map G and I. I would not be enthusiastic about either Map I or Map G unless somehow things are rearranged so we won't all walk off the plank in three years. Now, I say that understanding that in two, in what, four years, I may not have a district to run in. So this would effectively district me out. And, and the same thing with Mr. Cordero. If Ms. Waterfield wins, then where would he run? But I guess that's the way things are. But I, I'm not real happy about all four of us being in one district. I also would exclude maps D and L, the vertical ones and the horizontal ones, because of the total lack of community of interest. I'm sorry, which two maps were those, Dr.--
D and L.
D and L. Okay. One's the ribbon of districts north and south, and one's east and west. I don't think there's a whole lot of enthusiasm for that. So I think there's four viable maps, N, J, H, and M.
And M?
N, J, H, and M.
Okay, let me see. Thank you, Dr. Moats. Mr. Cordero.
Well, I haven't, I've been thinking about this since the district meeting issue came up. And I've mentioned to some people, maybe some people in the audience, that it just could turn into a situation where be careful what you ask for because you might get it. The, the law, sir, Mr. Demographer, that we deal with, the California Voting Rights Act, says that we can't take some of these maps. Some of these maps do not meet the legal criteria set. Is that correct, sir?
Well, they don't meet the federal requirements, sir.
They don't meet the federal. So if we accept some of these that don't meet that, then we're subjecting ourselves to almost an immediate possibility of a challenge and going through this in, in, in another phase, correct?
Yes.
And I mentioned that at the meeting over at the vets, that it's going to be almost impossible to cut the lines at Main and Broadway, given the criteria of population, ethnic balance, and things like that. It's, it's just, it's almost unheard of. And I, I get the feeling that people think there's going to be like an iron curtain that's going to go up when this, when this district changes. Main and Broadway is still going to be there. A young lady mentioned when her family comes to town and they talk about Main and Broad, it still will be there. It's not going to change. The, the lines for voting will have changed, but you're not going to change Main and Broadway. When you get off of the freeway over by Denny's at 166 and turn left, go toward Guadalupe, you're still going down the same main street whether the districts are there or not. So I, I, there's not going to be a geographical change of that. I agree with everyone in here that said the normal break is at Main and Broadway. I think that we all agree with that. But we can't take that thought process and transfer it to the legal side of things so that we can meet the criteria set by the federal government. I, I don't know how we could do that. And if somebody can figure that out and still keep us out of court, then that might be a great idea. And when I see people come to the chambers like this, like icons of our community, Minga Seja, and Helen Galvain, and Hazel, I can't get used to calling her this, De Vallos? Velos? Okay. And Mary Jacca, and the young person that spoke with the blue shirt and the glasses, you're an apprised leader person. Stay with it. You're going to do some wonderful things in the community no matter where you live. And Robert Dickerson, and Lawanda, these are people that we should be listening to, and we've been listening to for years and years and years. But I don't think anybody heard us when we said that you're probably not going to get your lines drawn at Main and Broadway. And I don't think that's going to change in this meeting or another meeting that we might have. We're going to have, we're not all going to get what we want. I will say that one of the ones that comes closest, in my opinion, and that gives three of the four districts, and I'm not in favor of the five districts at all, it gives three of the four districts are part of the downtown specific, no, downtown Main and Broadway, that is, and that would be Map H. Map H gives everyone except the fourth district right up against Main and Broadway. And as close as it gets is about three blocks. I hope that that's one of the considerations that stays in the, in the mix. I'm with Councilman Moats on the two that have all four of us in the same district. That's going to basically eliminate continuity, continuity of government. That's, it's done. And that's one of the criteria we need to consider. So I would have eliminated those that, that Councilman Moats eliminated as well. And I'm sorry that people are going to feel that way, but I don't, I don't know how you're going to get your way. It, it just doesn't fit the law. Thank you.
Matt, sorry, go ahead. Mr. Hayden, do you have a question or a comment?
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I'm, I'm just trying to get a consensus as I heard equal population was a requirement, and so we're going to go with that as far as criteria. I also heard that four districts was a clear majority--
Correct.
--for the city council. I also heard continuity of government was a consensus of the city council. And then trying not to pair if possible, which goes along with the continuity of government definition. But I didn't hear anything, and there was--
And the downtown--
And that was my question. I didn't, I heard one person mention the downtown. Is, is there a consensus of-- Is, is there a consensus of having the downtown majority of the districts, all the districts, none of the districts?
I, I really think that, I mean, as Mayor Patino says, has, has spoken so eloquently that, I mean, the downtown area is Santa Maria, the, the Main and Broadway area, and it's kind of like how they divide County of San Luis up. You know, their five districts start in the city of San Luis, and all five districts have a portion of, of the city of San Luis Obispo. I, I think that's kind of similar here, that we should make every effort to have all four districts have a vested interest in the downtown area of Santa Maria, in the downtown area of Santa Maria specifically, Main and Broadway. That doesn't necessarily mean that they have to have, you know, a majority of the pie or, or a minority, but, but a significant part of their district should be concerned with the downtown area, would be my.
I would agree.
And is that the downtown specific plan?
Yes.
The downtown specific plan area.
Absolutely.
So, it's consensus?
Yes. Shall we start by, okay, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted, we were talking about maps, and I never got to finish what I was saying, but in regards to what the criteria we're looking at, and making sure that we've got the downtown, we have a common interest, we have continuity of government as well, I would like to go ahead and include for consideration is map N1.
N1?
Mayor?
Yes.
I would agree with Ms. Waterfield. All of them touch Main and Broadway, albeit in District Two, only three blocks of it, but it does meet that criteria of all four districts intersecting at Main and Broadway.
Okay, thank you.
And that, and that keeps the continuity of government, you know, as Mr. Boyson indicated that there's not much he can do with him and Dr. Moats.
Madam Mayor?
Dr. Moats.
On map N1, I have a problem with District Number Three. There's absolutely no continuity of interest in District Number Three.
Is that M1, you said?
Map N1. It sort of looks like they devise districts one, two, and four, and whatever was left, they lumped into three. But on three, in terms of continuity of interest, contains some of the least economically viable areas in Santa Maria with the most economically viable areas. I, I just don't see what Sheila and New Love have to do with Country Club Estates and Foxenwood.
Dr. Moats, my, my point of view, and this is where I can't divide my mind, because as a sitting city councilperson for going on my third year, and as a planning commissioner, I never divided the city up in my mind. I always represented the entire city. So, it's tough trying to break the city of Santa Maria up into divisions and who has what and who doesn't have what. So, it's, I'm just looking at it as a.
But then, what is the community of interest?
Pardon me?
What is the community of interest?
Let me go back to.
I mean, no one cares about such things.
You know what, Dr. Moats?
The community of interest is governing the entire city, because even though we're going to be elected in different districts, I'm speaking only for myself, in my mind, it's going to be hard to look at Santa Maria in four districts, because we've been doing what we do forever.
I, I understand what you're saying, and then I look at the County of Santa Barbara, where you have community of interest. You have Montecito and Cuyama, you have Isla Vista and Guadalupe, and, and they aren't there. So, I, I guess it's, it's a consideration, it may not rank as high. It, it's something we have to consider, and I understand that. But I think the community interests in the other three districts are definitely there.
Well, and that's correct, because you look at District Three in the county, and it is Guadalupe and Isla Vista. It's, you know.
And I'm not, I'm not sure you can't have more than one community of interest in a district.
Absolutely.
And I think that, as, as Dr. Moats points out, there are affluent areas within District Three, and certainly there are some very poor areas in, in District Three.
And Four.
And, and if we look at Four, it's, the two, Four, and Three are basically the, I would say that there is quite a diversity of, for lack of something better, in, income levels in, in those three, in all three districts there. But, you know, that is Santa Maria.
But one way I have of looking at it is the voters in the Sheila and New Love district are going to be totally diluted out by the people south of them.
But my point is you're not going to stop representing them, in whoever it is. You just don't stop representing them because they're not in your district. You just don't shut that off automatically. I mean, I, I can't.
Well, yeah, I'll elaborate on.
Mr. Cordero.
Ms. Waterfield's comment. I agree that it's going to be very difficult to shut it off. But for all practical purposes, the people in your district are going to elect you and keep you in office, if in fact you want to stay there. I know Mr. George Barnes over here, I would consider him a friend. If he comes to me and says, Mike, I'd like to talk to you about this thing with the council and this, I've got to say, hey, I can help you, man. I mean, I can listen to you, but you got to go to who represents you in District One. And, and then if I do fall in his direction, what about the person that lives in the district that I'm representing? And they say, well, you're giving your vote to Barnes over here, what about me? So, it, these are unintended consequences. Nobody started out to do this. But these are unintended consequences that we have to deal with here, and the five of us, well, four of us, have to deal with and, and be able to try to understand George Barnes, yet meet the needs of the person that elected me. That's going to be difficult. And, you know, I'm prepared to stand for that, but I mean, you can't, you can't have both. This was brought to us under threat of a lawsuit, and we're dealing with the same law, the California Voters Right Act and the federal law, Voting Right Act. We're dealing with those same two issues that brought this to our city. And now, we're in the next phase, and we have to implement it. And in order to do that, it's going to be painful, mostly to us. But it's going to be painful that I can't sit across the table with George Barnes anymore and say, you know, let's talk about that. I would have to get his representative, whoever he or she may be. So, we're, this has created an unintended consequence that we'll have to work out, and we will, some kind of way. I mean, it'll, it'll, it'll find its equilibrium point someplace in time. But until we find out how we're going to do it, we're going to have to select these maps and, and figure out where we're going to cut the city, and it's probably not going to be at Main and Broadway.
Okay. Mr. Hayden, you have the, the criteria that we've given you?
Yes, Madam Mayor. What I heard is the statute calls for equal population. I also heard that you would like the four district maps, not five district maps, have no pairing if appropriate, and that way it goes with continuity of government. And then you would like the downtown specific plan in all four quadrants.
Okay. So, can you, can you then give us the list of the ones that will automatically be excluded because they, they don't meet the population criteria?
The, the ones that would be excluded because they do not meet the population are A, maps A, B, C, D, excuse me, A, B, C, E, and F. A as in Apple, B as in Boy, C as in Charlie, E as in Edward, and F as in Frank. Those would be the ones that would be eliminated because they do not meet the population statute.
Okay.
If you look at the downtown specific plan and the desire to keep the downtown specific plan in each one of the four quadrants, that would eliminate map D as in David, L as in Larry, M as in Mary, Q as in Queen.
Q?
Q is a five district.
Oh, I'm sorry, those are already off, because those are five districts.
Five district, yeah. Q, P, O, P, and Q.
Have you eliminated all the five district plans yet?
No, we will, no, yeah, with this, okay.
And that's, that's the other one I was going to be going through, is if you eliminate the five districts, that would be Q as in Queen, O as in Oscar, and P as in Paul.
So, which ones does that leave us?
That leaves, based off of those criteria, I, N, G, J, and H.
Right.
Five maps.
So, then if we go to continuity of government?
Oh. The question on the continuity of government, there is no way around pairing the council members in the southwest quadrant of the city. However, there are other maps that pair council members together. Maps I and G pair all the council members in one, one district. Count, maps J pair council members Waterfield and Cordero in one district, and then, albeit council members Boyson and Moats in the other district. But that one cannot be avoided.
Okay, so we can.
Understood.
Take out J?
Well, I mean, if we took out I and G, for sure.
I, G, mm-hmm.
So, that would leave N, J, and H.
And?
With J being two council members in two separate districts, two council members in each, in two districts. So, N and H are the only ones that, are the ones that would separate council members as much as possible.
N and?
And H.
N and H.
Now, but H does not include the downtown specific plan in all four.
If, one point, if I may, we do have one more hearing as well, so we don't want to get down to one map tonight.
No, I know, but I'm just.
No, no.
We're just trying to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're just trying to, is that correct, Mr. Hayden?
On, what was the question, Councilmember Boyson?
Well, we were talking about the downtown specific plan. Does, does that, H?
Does not include.
Provide downtown specific plan coverage for all four districts?
It's on the map in front of you?
Yeah, it's the map on the left, and it, as was mentioned earlier, District Four doesn't quite touch the intersection of Broadway and Main. It's, I think it was mentioned, two blocks away, or actually, it's only one block away. But it is, all four districts are in the downtown specific plan, so all four have a significant piece of downtown.
All, all four districts are in the downtown?
Right here, look at this.
Oh, I see. This one comes around, I see the horseshoe. Got it.
Mr. Johnson, how many maps did you want us to pair down to?
Looks like we paired it down to three.
If you can get down to three or four, that's success.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Cordero.
Map H, I mentioned that one earlier, and, and said that all four districts do not touch Main and Broadway, but all four districts are involved, are a part of the downtown specific plan. Is that correct, Mr. Hayden?
That's a correct statement.
So, that, well, not at Main and Broadway with all four of them, but all four of them have a good part of the downtown specific plan. And I, and I agree that, that every councilperson should have certainly an interest in the downtown specific plan as it moves forward and continues to evolve and change.
You know, map H has a long skinny istness that connects the bulk of District Three with Hancock Park, and it looks like it's virtually being swallowed by District Four. That smacks to me of gerrymandering.
Did, did you want to comment from the demographer on that?
Oh, um, well.
Maybe we can work with it later.
It's a trade-off. It's not a compact shape, that's for sure. But it is avoiding a pairing, actually, a tripling, of putting three councilmembers in one seat. So, that, and it is doing it by keeping the, using the business corridor there, the south side, the business corridor to connect two neighborhoods. So, we're not dividing up any one neighborhood, we're just linking a non-compact one with the main part of the district. So, what is gerrymandering? Racially gerrymandering is a legal term. Gerrymandering generally is just any map that the speaker doesn't agree with. There's no, I can't tell you certain maps are gerrymandering and certain are not. It's a matter of are they compact? Are they compact? Do they keep communities of interest together? Do they respect the choices of voters? And I do want to emphasize one thing on the tone, in terms of continuity of government. The idea is, the voters have put in the current council. If we put four councilmembers in one seat, we're telling the voters, you elected these four, but we're going to knock three of them out with a pen. So, that's, that's why it's an issue. It's not the perspective of the office holder wanting to stay in office. I'm sure your spouses would probably love the fact that you're home more often. But it's more, should the voters decide if a councilmember gets to run for reelection or, and has a chance of reelection, or should the demographer's pen eliminate the voter's choice?
Well, I would like to think that any time that it's possible, that the voters should decide, and certainly it shouldn't be a stroke of someone's pen. You know, this is kind of like a blanket that's too small for a bed. No matter how you pull it, somebody's not going to be covered. And every time we start talking about the population, we pull it in one direction. Then we talk about the ethnic balance, and it pulls in another direction. And, and I think it's safe to say here that there is no perfect answer. Our forefathers that started building this community back in 1905, I'm sure never expected a demographer, they didn't even know what the word was, to, to come here in 2017 and try to help us to resolve this as an issue. So, the, we are not, I can't say this enough times, we are not going to come up with a perfect answer for everybody. I didn't really think about what Councilman Moats said, but as I look at this, I might be convinced along with his comment. But I was trying to pull the blanket in the direction of getting all of the districts having a part of the downtown specific plan, and this doesn't. But it does kind of, now that he says it, it does look like number four is kind of chewing it up.
Oh, will you finish, Mr. Cordero?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, Mr. Hayden?
Madam Mayor, to, to bring it, bring it back to a status right now, the maps that are still on the table would be maps I, N, G, J, and H. However, I wanted to clarify that maps I and G pair four councilmembers in one district. And that goes against the continuity of government.
And I would say those should be eliminated.
Okay.
I'd go along with that.
I would as well.
Okay, then if, if that's the case, then it brings it down to a manageable number to take to the next public hearing, which would be N, J, and H. Nancy, John, and Henry.
I thought we just eliminated N.
But why did we eliminate N?
Oh, no, we didn't. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Just looked at the drawing.
I'd like to say I'm very much in favor of N, J, and H being the three.
I, why did we, why did we eliminate M, Mr. Hayden?
N, Nancy.
Nancy, John, Howard.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. So what were the three, NJ and H? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Nancy, John, and Harold.
J and H. Nancy, John, and Howard. That brings it down to a manageable three for discussion at the next public hearing.
I'm comfortable with that.
I am too.
Dr. But, Mr. Cordero, also?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Consensus?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Okay. The other decision before you, and, and you can discuss it tonight, or leave it for a later discussion, however you wish, is the sequencing. And this is which districts hold elections in which years. And as I mentioned, if we get a nice map where everything pairs up just one to one, then it's not an issue. We all know how it's going to go. But in all the maps, as we've discussed, you're going to end up with one pair and, and one vacant seat. And so then the sequencing question is, which seats are up in 2018, which are up in 2020. When we get a pair, it, it's nicest if they're both in the same election year, because then at least they can both run. But in this case, the two in each map that are paired are not in the same year. So the council will need to decide which seat is up, really, what the council needs to decide is whether it's southern seats up in 2018 or 2020, and then the northern seat, or the vacant seat, where it is, will be up in the other year. So it's something you can talk about tonight, or just think about publicly, rather than comment in more detail at the next meeting as well. It's something I didn't talk about a lot at the beginning, because there are lots of scenarios, lots of options, and if we have 15 maps, we're talking about scenarios of each of those, you don't get anywhere. It's something we need to spend more time on in the presentation. Now we're down to three maps.
Okay. So we can do this at an, at a, at a later meeting? Dr. Moats, do you have a question?
Well, I think it's obvious, the answer to the question. Mrs. Waterfield and Mr. Boyson will be in different districts, and so they'll be the two candidates that run in 2018. What other option is there? Isn't that obvious?
I think, no, they're not both 2018 terms. Oh, they are. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought they were not. Okay.
Do we have to discuss it?
I mean, the council needs to decide one way or another. If there's consensus already, that would take that off the table.
I, I would like to hold it off, Madam Mayor, and, and go over these in more detail and, and decide what, what the long-term repercussions are with us, District, uh, excuse me, with, starting with the district in one in three, or one in four, or one in two, or four in three, or whatever. I, I think that there's too many different scenarios to go over tonight with, with us here. And I'd like to hear more about it, both from the demographer and from Mr. Hayden, but whatever the will of the council.
So, Ms. Waterfield?
I have a hard, I had a hard time hearing you. What was your-
I'd like to postpone that final decision until we've had a chance to go over the, the ramifications of the various selections of one in three, two in four, one in two, and so forth, and see where we are going to end up, because there are many ramifications that we have, we will have to deal with.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Boyson? Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just a public note. I will put together a table that shows each map and the impact of assigning each seat to each year, and we'll get that posted on the city website, so that the public can see the listing of options.
Okay.
And one thing that comes up a lot when we're doing this, for the public to keep in mind, is often we're looking at continuity of office and sequencing. The other issue is turnout issues. So given that you are on the statewide cycle, it's an interesting question that we wrestle with, where if a heavily Latino or any other heavily low turnout district is vacant, do you want that seat on 2018 when turnout will be lower, or on a presidential cycle? It often presents a challenge of, do you want a vacant seat to come up right away, or do you want it to come up when it has a, a higher chance of the low turnout voters get, choosing their candidate? So it's not a crystal clear question that way as well. So if you're going to think about that, we'll mention it, and then we'll put it on the website.
And Mr. Johnson, if I could, I, if, if, say, we decided that it was Councilmember Waterfield in my district that was up for reelection, or up for election in 2018, there's nothing to prevent Dr. Moats from running against me in 2018. Effectively, he would be running from a safe seat. Isn't that right?
Yes, yes. This is the, the start of the twist that happened, which is a, a 2020 councilmember who's in a 2018 seat can run midterm. And if they win that seat, if they win that election, they then resign their at-large seat, creating a two-year vacancy for the rest of that at-large seat, and they're sworn into the four-year district seat. So yes, it does offer that option.
Can I add a question to that?
Dr. Moats, I, I, I'd be scared to death to run against you, but it, it would be an honor.
Okay, I guess that's the consensus. Our city attorney, Mr. Chahid.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. If you look at the bottom of page three and the top of page four of the staff report, staff does have a recommendation for sequencing if you go with four districts. And that was to put the two councilmembers who are up for election in 2018, assuming they're in different districts, that those would be the first two districts to proceed.
Okay. Thank you. And, Mr. Hayden, before I go to you, I, I heard at this meeting, and I've heard it at a City Council meeting, and I think it was brought up at the first meeting that we had for, the second meeting we had for districting, about renters. And I, I've heard this from two or three people. So if we could have something on the agenda, or maybe a workshop to inform people about renters' rights, and I think, looking at some of these maps, I think we have like two districts where there were heavy renters. I, I'd have to look at them again. And the print is really small, and the lighting isn't real good, so I'll have to double-check on that. But if we could do something at a, at a, at another meeting. So, any other questions or comments from the council? Okay. So a report by our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Patino. The next City Council meeting to discuss district elections will be held at the Menami Center, and it'll be a regular City Council meeting, which would be at 6:30 at the Menami Center over off of Inos. And that concludes my staff report. That's the primary purpose of the next meeting. One item per regular business.
And that'll be May 2nd at 6:30 at Menami. I want to thank everyone tonight for your input. I want to thank you for coming out. We certainly appreciate it. And have a good evening.